Good evening, everybody. Tonight I'd like to call to order the Town of Naples Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, March 4th, 2025. First order of business is to drive in the place of allegiance, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. In attendance this evening, we have Jim Allen, Martina Witz, myself Doug Bogdan, Marty Zertarian, who's an alderman, will make Marty a voting member tonight, and Kathy Tomborelli, our municipal planner, and Kathy Eddy as assistant to the code enforcement. Item 2A, does anybody on the board have any conflict of interest with the items brought before the board this evening?
No.
That's four to zero, four noes. I think I'm supposed to go like that. So item three is we're going to review the minutes of the February 18th meeting.
I'll make a motion to accept them with that one edit that I had provided to Kathy.
I think part of that one.
I'll second that.
Okay, so motion by Martina to approve them as written with the one edit with the line struck out of it, and seconded by Marty in all his favor. It's three in terms of standing because she wasn't here. Four, under new business, we have subdivision sketch plans, and we'll jump right into A. It's a request from Caleb Kennedy for a sketch plan for a proposed three-lot residential subdivision located on King Hill Road, map R02, Lot 39, in the rural zoning district. Somebody represent that. Caleb, good evening.
How are you guys?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. Yes, so it is my understanding that there's a rule in place that if you can only sell a parcel of land once every five years without needing to go to a minor subdivision. A little background story, friend of mine bought a parcel of land off of Paul, the landowner, on King Hill Road, year and a half ago about now, trying to purchase two acres directly next to him. So that's why we're having to go into the minor subdivision. I've got the survey proposed to you guys as well. I believe I've completed everything needed for the sketch plan application. It's my first time doing this, so I don't know if you guys have any questions or concerns with this. Well, technically my second time, yes. Kathy and I have been here before, a different town. So yeah, I think just my request is if this is acceptable to go with this minor subdivision. Looking for preapproval so I can get forward with the septic design, soil testing, and everything needed for the official minor subdivision plan and application.
Can you just clarify which of the lots is the one?
Yes, sorry, so.
There's one, two, and then there's the larger one that's two acres, is that?
There's the larger one, the two acres that goes in additional roughly 60 feet beyond. That is my proposed lot, so the lot on the right. The right on the left is currently the Hueys, Kyle and Cody, Cody Lobby, Kyle Huey is on the left.
You know, I saw one of them printed up with the red around it.
That's an approximate on the back of your memo. It's the approximate. I just drew it close enough for.
So you're just going to be building your own home?
Yep, I'm just looking to build my own.
And that's going to be, you're going to have one driveway onto this King Hill Road?
Yep, it'll be just a driveway directly off King Hill Road, right there.
Kathy?
Yes.
On the memo that you sent us?
Yes, sorry.
Those first six items are the things that he provided, is that what you're saying?
That's.
Or the things?
At the top, those are the things that he provided for the meeting.
Oh.
The 103 pre-application sketch plan.
Okay. So the butters within 500 feet were notified?
We did that. That's part of your procedure here is actually notify at sketch plan.
At this time, there's no waiver request, is what I think.
Say that again.
Is there a waiver request at this time?
No, I don't believe so at this point.
He did submit an application, but he did not fill out the checklist, and I will sit down and work with him on that. He is a self-applicant, he's doing this on his own, so I'm more than glad to sit with him and help him do that if there's any applicable waiver requests. At this time, there is not.
Looks pretty straightforward to me.
Yeah, at this time, I think what he's looking for is just to kind of get, not obviously an approval, but a nod that, you know, it's good to go forward before he starts spending the type of money that's needed to do this site evaluation, et cetera.
Does that be a preliminary approval?
No, no, this is just sketch plan. He's just looking also to see if you see anything that's going to be of concern for you. He's been through this before in New Gloucester, and he picked a lot that had a bad DEP permit on it.
Unknown situation.
So he's stumbled into subdivision twice now, this time in Naples, but this one doesn't appear to have any things attached to it that are problematic, so.
Yeah, I have a septic design and soils testing lined up, scheduled, just kind of looking for a pre yes before I start paying all these extra people.
I did go through the list of requirements, and I did not find anything, and I wanted to ask you guys this because I ran into another application where there was something in a different ordinance that I had missed. I did not see anything about the dimensions of a lot having to have a ratio of one to four, one to three. Some towns require that you can't, and I didn't see anything, and Jimmy's shaking his head, no.
You just have a front, road frontage.
Road frontage is the only requirement. That's all I found too, but I just wanted to make sure that we were.
Road frontage and square footage.
And square footage.
Is it 100-foot road frontage?
Yes. It is, and 40,000 square feet of lot, which you well exceed that.
87,000 square feet and 114 feet of road frontage.
Some towns have this bizarre thing where you can't create long skinny lots, so, but I couldn't find anything.
Yeah, I'm talking to the landowner, I'm lucky that I was able to convince him to sell this to me, he has no intent of ever splitting anymore acreage at the moment. He really didn't want to get rid of these two, but he likes me and my buddy Cody, so he's allowing it.
And the other thing that they are aware of is that now that this is now a subdivision, so any changes to the parent parcel now is going to involve an amendment to subdivision, and the owner is aware of that scenario, that now his lot is wrapped into this subdivision. I spoke with the fire chief today, and at this point, with just the three lots, he didn't see any need for any additional fire protection. Of course, if they do develop that remaining land, it could potentially start looking at that, but right now, we're just looking at one more lot split off.
But that doesn't have anything to do with him.
Doesn't have anything to do with him. I'm just, all I'm saying is that I talked to the fire chief about this particular application.
Cool.
Do we have, so you had some next steps question there, Kathy?
I do, hold on. I just wanted to throw it out there, in your ordinance, before he comes back for approval, it does mention that you need to schedule, or this is a minor subdivision, you don't have to schedule a public hearing or sidewalk, and so I'm wondering if you have any interest in that.
I don't have any.
I would agree, I don't have any interest in a sidewalk in this area where the property is.
I don't.
So I think we can waive, if we have to waive the sidewalk, just not schedule a sidewalk, excuse me, sidewalk for, as far as a public hearing goes for a single lot to be split off, we kind of say the same thing to that, that's my thought on that.
Okay. I feel it's necessary.
Jim?
I agree.
Okay, so I will work with the applicant on getting the submittals together and the checklist. Just wanted to make him aware that if you're looking to be on the April 15th Planning Board meeting, you have to have everything in by the 18th of March. We need to work our way through the checklist for minor subdivision and see if there's any waivers that are to be requested, but this one is pretty straightforward, pretty straightforward application.
Okay, I think those two things are all right, guys. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, I think we're all set.
The light open door is open.
The next item up is 4B, it's a request from All-in-One Insulation, excuse me, All-in-One Insulation, Inc., represented by Terranine Consultants, LLC, for a sketch plan for a proposed seven-lot residential subdivision located at 528 Sebago Road, map R07, Lot 63, in the rural district.
Mr. Chairman?
Good afternoon.
Members of the board, my name is Tim Mishu, with Terranine Consultants, here tonight for the seven-lot Wildflower Estates subdivision on behalf of All-in-One Insulation. Wildflower Estates subdivision is a proposed seven-lot, single-family subdivision to be located at 528 Sebago Road, provided a concept plan, I believe you guys are familiar with the concept. This is Sebago Road here. Briefly for, as I saw in the packet that was submitted earlier, that we are aware that this is Lot 17 of the Wildwood Acres subdivision that was approved by the town in 1982, and there's a current purchase and sales agreement, and the applicant is looking to amend Lot 17 of the parcel to create this seven-lot subdivision. Also, a little please, there's proposing for 1700 square foot of area to be peeled off to Lot 16, and we are creating a lot with frontage on Sebago Road, which will become Lot 1 of the Wildflower Estates subdivision. And with that, we're extending a brand-new road in, 1700 feet, I believe, to access six more lots. There's one stream crossing culvert that we're going to be installing, and just to talk about the existing conditions, so we are looking to create a 1.09 acre Lot 1, which will have frontage on the new proposed road. The existing property is 10.31 acres, Town Rural Area District is where it's located, it's basically undeveloped woods. Parcel is not located on a map to Aquifer, according to Main Geological Survey, it's not located in a flood hazard area, and it is not located within Town Shoreland Zone. The property is tributary to Brandy Pond. We had wetlands completed on the project, and there's one intermittent unnamed stream flowing through the project here. For the proposed conditions, we're looking to adhere to the Town Rural Area District with 40,000 square foot lots, lots will be served by private well, individual subsurface, and overhead power provided from existing utilities in Sebago Road. A fire system will be provided for the subdivision to meet fire protection needs and will be reviewed by the Fire Department. At this time, we don't know if we would locate that down by the Hammerhead, or we'll discuss that with the Fire Department and see whether they would like to have that located. The road is proposed to be 1,575 feet in length and terminated with the Hammerhead. The road was designed of a Town of Naples Minor Roadway Geometric Standards, and includes 18-foot paved travelway with three-foot wide gravel shoulders. We have provided open space that exceeds the town requirements of 10%, we're providing approximately 12, and that is the shaded in green area of the open space. And also coincides with, as part of the Wildwood Acres subdivision from 1982, this lot is encumbered with a 50-foot forested buffer that was provided for stormwater management back in the day, and so we have maintained that, and we are looking to preserve that as open space and to use that as part of our stormwater management for the project as well for forested buffers. Stormwater management for the project, we have at this time completed our stormwater design, and I'm working on putting together the stormwater application now. Basically, what we're doing, what we're looking to do is have a series of level spreaders and vegetated buffers for the project, so we don't have any actual construction of stormwater structural BMPs, meaning we don't have any sand filters or gravel wetlands, we're trying to use all the natural vegetation as we can. The project parcel is located in the Bay of Naples, which in Chapter 502 of Main DEP is a lake most at risk, so therefore, this project is required due phosphorus standards, required in Chapter 500 for the creation of over 20,000 square feet of impervious area and five acres of developed area in a lake at-risk watershed. And additionally, we have designed to manage a 25-year storm in accordance with town requirements. So if I may, I'd like to just talk about stormwater a little bit. This has to do with, just roll into the, some of the waivers that I'm requesting. So what we have is, we have basically 35 acres up above our Lot 17 of the Wildwood subdivision that flows through our property, proposed property. So here we have the unnamed stream, and what we're proposing to do is, before I get to the waivers, but we're looking to not provide the geometric standards to have the roadway pitched at the center grade line, we're looking to have it monosloped, because what we're trying to do is have all this 35 acres to be collected in this ditch line of the road and to bypass the site, otherwise, it would get mixed in with our stormwater that requires phosphorus treatment, and then it would require the, all the BMPs to be exceptionally large. So we're looking to separate upward flows from flows on our property from the proposed impervious areas that require treatment. So basically, we have a split in this ditch line here with this line that kind of the split, so this water would come here and would go naturally into the unnamed stream, and we'll have a Army Corps 36-inch culvert buried by 12 inches, stream crossing there, and the ditch, this area here, we get collected in the ditch as well, we have a 24-inch cross culvert proposed that will discharge to a level spreader to help with our pre-post and to put the flows back into sheet flow and then discharge downstream from the property. So that is leading me into the waiver, before I will go over the permitting requirements for the project. The project creates less than a tenth of an acre of wetland, so NRPA Tier 1 wetlands are not required for the project. We will be trying to acquire major subdivisions, like plan approval from the town, we will be submitting a DEP stormwater permit with phosphorus calculations for the project to the DEP for a review and approval, and we'll have Army Corps self-verification for under 5,000 square feet of wetlands. The only wetland disturbances are associated with the stream crossing, so we'll be submitting a NRPA Main DEP stream crossing permit by rule for the 36-inch culvert, and obviously will be, for over an acre of disturbance, we'll be submitting the main construction general permit. So overall, minimal impacts for the project, these permits are very typical for a project this size. We will have a homeowner association documents, and the lot owners will have access to the open space, and again, the project contains a 50-foot deed which will be maintained for the project. So having said that, I'd like to, before I go into the waivers, if you have any questions about the design at this time or presentation, take some questions if there are any at this time.
I just have a question.
Sure.
For that, the middle of that page, kind of by the light brown yellow with that, that's your sheet flow area, so what you're going to have to?
So the different colors?
Yeah, right in the center, right in the center.
Yeah, right here. This is where, this is going to be a 24-inch culvert, so this line here is a dividing line, and stormwater running down, all of this area goes to the stream, this area goes to this ditch line, which goes to a 24-inch cross culvert, and we'll have a large riprap level spreader with combination buffer to return the flows back to sheet flow, so we can meet our 25-year storm requirements.
Appreciate you saying that again, I did get all that. My last part of my question was, which lot is that going to be on? I really can't tell from here, it looks like Lot 4.
The beauty has been on Lot 4. And what this plan does, I know it's small, I wanted to talk about the stormwater, the overall watershed, but these colors dictate how treatment we're providing for phosphorus. All the green is for the lots, all the lots flow towards the back, and so we have forested buffer all along the back, so that provides the phosphorus treatment for the lots. The road, now that we've gone over the requirement for the monoslope because of all this flow, the other great thing about doing the monoslope is we're using forested buffer all along the roadway to provide phosphorus treatment for the road, so all the water, we don't have any catch basins or anything like that, everything just sheet flows right into the woods directly, so it's ideal. This product is low impact, is basically what we're doing here. Yellow is untreated because of the stream crossing, that'll get permitted with the DEP, and then the here up front, along Sebago Road, this will be stormwater buffer, forested buffer as well, it's just sheet flowing on, and then the blues will be a combination of ditch line, grass, and meadow areas to provide more phosphorus treatment. So having said that, we can discuss the.
So the stream, is that, that you talked about, is that a year-round stream or is that a seasonal runoff?
It's unnamed intermittent stream.
So it's viewed as a seasonal runoff?
It drives up.
A seasonal runoff by DEP?
Yep. So what we'll be doing is, it's very typical, we'll be putting a 36-inch culvert in, it's buried by 12 inches, and the culvert gets filled in with natural stream bottom, so we try to emulate, imitate the natural stream bed, so when it is flowing for that time of the year, and it allows critters to flow and back and forth, and basically, it just provides connectivity for the wetlands on both sides of the road, is what's going on. So we will be getting a NRPA stream crossing permit by rule for that work. And typically, that work gets done between July 15th and October 1st, when it's the dry season, so there's just minimal impacts, so that'll be the goal.
Are you looking to this to be a private road?
Yes, sir.
Or is this a town road?
Private road.
So you're building it to private road standards, not, with no expectation of being a town road?
We are building to minor geometric standards, and with the Hammerhead, and we're providing the sister. So no, I don't believe we're proposing it for it to be a public road.
Okay, and does not meet public road requirements, okay.
So on to the waivers, and when we do it for, I think they're probably pretty typical for.
Sorry.
Oh, sure.
So what made you determine to use a 36-inch and a 24-inch culvert? I know that a lot of the stream crossing work that's being done, everybody's upsizing their culverts.
Right.
Do you feel like those?
Well, we have.
Obviously, you used some data to decide that that was.
Yes, because we've modeled the watershed with HydroCAD, and the 36-inch stream crossing culvert, based on the size of the culvert and the fact that it's an intermittent stream, we're using an Army Corps 36-inch buried by 12 inches, and we have to analyze the cross-sectional area of the culvert plus the cross-sectional area of the stream itself, and then the culvert has to be three times larger than the cross-sectional area of the stream. So when we'd be submitting that to Army Corps or the DEP, we'll get approval for that. So if it needed to be, it could go up to like 48 inches, but we don't think we need that. And the other culvert, proposed 24, that's modeled right in the middle here, that's modeled directly from the HydroCAD computer software.
And everything you said on the monoslope, that's all wooded still, or is that?
The monoslope?
Well, you're calling whatever that, the hill that slopes towards the, is that all? What is the condition of that?
Yes, it's woods, and there's a couple of residential homes, I think, but it's woods, it's bars. There is a, I'm not sure the name of, this is Sebago Road, so there is a road that goes in here, I think there's like a junkyard or something down here, right? I'll Google Earth. So this road is just providing access to that, and then there might be another couple of homes, but nothing, nothing of consequence. But we have modeled that into our HydroCAD software.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you also model in, isn't that where that solar farm might go someday? That was approved? I think that would change.
Well, that would be ideal because that's very low impact, and that doesn't affect our HydroCAD modeling.
Okay. I don't know how much, I don't recall the trees that had to be cut down for that, I'm just, I mean, it seems like you're dependent on what happens on that hill that you don't own.
Right.
For this whole thing to work.
Well, I would encourage the town to provide us with information on projects that have been approved in this 35-acre watershed, so we can get that into our model.
I think it's been more than the time period where you have to substantially start a project, but I can check on that.
Okay, I just, I feel better.
And I don't.
That's all in that area, I mean, that is something we did.
So.
I don't recall where that's standing right now, but that's what I was thinking.
A solar farm, to make it viable, we're going to say there's probably 10 acres of tree cutting, and there's probably a half acre of, maybe of impervious area associated with the arrays that we could place into our model. If we had that information, you could provide a site plan for us.
Okay, that'd be great, I just feel like more information is better on that. The other question I had was, did you mention something about overhead power, because our ordinance requires underground?
I was trying to sneak that in.
Yes.
I got caught.
Do I win a prize?
We will be providing underground power.
Yeah.
From overhead power in Sebago Road. I couldn't, I actually couldn't find in the ordinance.
I can give you the reference, it's in the memo, the reference.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't quite find it, so.
Yeah.
I figured I'd try.
Okay. What was the other thing on this so far? Well, go ahead, it will come back to me. Okay. If you could for me, just explain one more time.
Sure.
It'd help me.
Yep.
So all the, knowing that there might be a solar farm there, I think, first of all, I think that the CMP is, there's no room on the grid, it wasn't one of the projects that's going to be done, but I'm not sure, and I'll check on that. Additionally, I think it's past the timeframe where you have to actually start before coming back to the planning board again. But all the parcels above there, all the land above there, that parcel is going to be, is currently going downhill.
Yes.
And it's going to be directed into the ditching for this new road?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And then all of, and all of that will go back into the stream that's there as it is going, kind of now?
Kind of, so this line here is a boundary in the watershed, so essentially a water go both ways.
Gotcha.
So this area will continue on to the unnamed seasonal stream, where this smaller area will get intercepted by the roadway ditch.
Gotcha.
Directed to a 24-inch cross culvert, which will go to a level lip spreader in combination forested buffer, so that we can meet our 25-year stormwater requirements.
So all of the stormwater created by the development, your development, is going to be directed towards?
Essentially the green.
Okay.
So these, all the dividing activities for the lots, it's hard to see, but there's a forest, a 50-foot forested buffer all along here, so all the lot. So all the lot developed area goes to those buffers. All the roadway area goes to the roadside buffers, so we've got a 50-foot roadside buffer all along the downside of the road. So that's providing all our phosphorus treatment for this project, essentially. Forested buffer down here, and then we got areas associated with the stream itself that we have, has to be. So essentially for this project, by doing the monoslope, allowed us to meet DEP requirements for phosphorus. And we've also, the applicant has a $12,000 compensation fee that he's required to pay into the compensation program.
So you're saying already, you know that you're not going to be able to treat all the phosphorus on site?
We are treating all the phosphorus on site.
Then what is he paying the compensation fee?
Uh, this is part of the, the DEP spreadsheets for the phosphorus.
Okay.
So we're meeting it, but there's certain levels of treatment, and then there's compensation fees that kick in. So you don't even worry-
Right, no, I do understand how compensation fees work, but I just thought, we just went to a seminar.
Well, so you know the, you know the, you know those spreadsheets, huh?
I think that was part, one of the slides that the guy-
Yeah, spreadsheet four.
But I thought that the, the compensation fees don't kick in until, unless you show that you're not treating all the phosphorus on site.
Um, there's certain levels of treatment, that we will be getting the DEP to approve the project. And then it has compensation fees attached to it.
So I'll just throw it out-
They're not treating all the phosphorus.
I'll just throw it out there right now, so I'm, I'm gonna be asking for a third-party review on this project, just because I don't have my civil engineering degree.
It's fine.
So, one more question, pre and post on the properties to the bottom, is it going to be pre and post stormwater? What's the impact on the people that are below there? There's a couple of butters on the bottom.
Yep, post will be below pre.
Below pre.
Post is below pre, for the 25-year storm event.
Yeah.
In accordance with town requirements. So we have done that design. And, yeah, third-party reviews, fine, most of our projects are, get third-party reviewed.
And the 50-foot buffer along, is on which side of the road?
Downside.
The downside?
Yeah. Because we're using it for phosphorus treatment. So it's on the, so the, every, this whole, this is the top of the hill.
Right, right.
Top of the hill, so everything's flowing this way.
Sure.
So even across our site, it's all flowing down. So that's why we're, get the buffers along the back, for the lots.
Yes.
And then we've got a 50-foot strip of woods, just right alongside the downside of the roadway.
Okay.
And that's gonna provide the phosphorus treatment for the-
On that side of the road.
On the house side of the road.
Yes, we're not, not listed on the map that's in front of us.
Okay, yeah, it's on the house side.
So the green is the existing stormwater, or buffer for stormwater that was part of the wildwood acres?
Nope, the green is our proposed open space.
Open space, okay.
Yep.
And that's gonna be maintained?
Yes.
Forested?
Absolutely. It'll be deeded. And the homeowners association will work such that the, all the lot owners will have access to the open space. And they have permission to create a trail if they so desire. But basically just remain undisturbed. And the 50-foot wildwood buffer is encompassed in the open space. Okay?
So it'll effectively create almost a loop around-
Absolutely.
Around the property, okay.
Yep.
So that lot one, is that driveway going to be from Sebago Road for that home?
It's existing, right?
It is existing.
It's existing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it is existing.
Are you just gonna sell the lots, or are you, is the, is the, not you?
I think the applicant is gonna sell lots.
Okay, so they're not doing construction, and it's more to be like-
I don't believe so.
Can build whatever you want, kind of a deal?
I don't believe so.
And we don't know what the price, do we know what the price range is, or does-
Well, it's gotta be probably 600,000, right? Everything's 600,000 these days.
For the, for the lot?
Oh, for the lots themselves, I was, I was taking home, uh, for the lots.
Well, I mean, so they're not selling a construction package?
No, they're, they're not.
You're not?
Nope.
Okay, so you're just saying you're estimating that the house with the lot would be 600,000?
Well, the lots are, the lots are only less than an acre. So you can, by the time you have septic and driveways, and, you know, you're limiting your, besides your home. All set to talk about waivers? So we've discussed a lot of this already.
Yeah, I wanna hear about the waivers.
So the waivers of- I'm sorry, sure.
So what's the distance to the Verizon Towers from here, on this property?
I do not know. Where, I don't know where the Verizon Towers are.
It's gonna be in the upper corner of the third-
That third section, way up there?
It's somewhere in there.
Okay, so it's over 10,000?
Just outside of that.
And a little bit this way.
Yeah, over here.
It's further than the existing house.
Yeah. So we've discussed-
Everyone going to waivers?
Yeah.
Waivers. So we discussed the waiver from the Appendix A, which is the roadway cross-section for the minor.
So instead of going like this and crowning at the center, you're gonna crown on one side?
Correct. Because we need all that stormwater runoff from the roadway, discharging directly into the woods, the buffer that we're gonna create. But also we need to separate all the 35 acres that are coming down onto us. Because otherwise, the phosphorus wouldn't work if we had to, if we were mixing stuff we have to treat with stuff that we don't have to treat. So, and it just, what it does, at the end of the day, it allows this project to be low-impact. We're using the natural vegetation to maximize it on the property. So it's only a 1,500-foot private road, so. So basically, the, the road is, the technical term is a super elevated, if they were doing DOT termination, terminology. So, street layout, obviously the requirement for paragraph Ds, for easements, for connectivities. And we're requesting a waiver from that, because there doesn't really appear to be a lot of connectivity potential on this private dead end, 1,500-foot road. Since the, the connectivity essentially heads on down towards the Brandy, Brandy Pond, for the most part. But I will, I do defer, I mean, I know you guys know the area a lot better than I do.
I don't see where you, where you have that connectivity.
Well, I guess what we were assuming it'd be off the-
No, I don't see it on here as a waiver request. I, I, it goes from number one, which is the crowning of the road, to the, to number two, which is a wave from a 20-foot easement.
Yeah, 20-foot easement for a pedestrian and a utility connectivity. Utility connectivity. So we're just requesting a waiver from, from connectivity requirements. We just don't see that there's any potential to have one. And we're, we're assuming that all that connectivity potential would be down here with the pond down here and private property down below, but I gotta defer to planning staff on, or encourage, encourage input.
Kevin, is that be for the sidewalk?
What's that?
That's number three. The next waiver request is for the sidewalks.
Yeah, but what is a, what is a 20-foot easement?
Connectivity, what that, what that means is, your, the ordinance is saying that there should be a 20-foot easement for extension of overhead underground power. Or a water main, if there was a water main, things like that. Sometimes in, you know, like say Thalmouth, or bigger towns, they require 50-foot right-of-way paper street for connectivity, if there's any potential for development, so you could have, you know, a-
An exact, you're talking about now.
So essentially that's what that's for, we're just, I mean, we, we're just not seeing the, the need for it. We don't really have anything that we're proposing to extend. And then, yes, we talked about, just talked about the sidewalks as well, and the requirement for a sidewalk to, to know where, again, we talked about it's will be a private drive, and just seven house lots.
So I just have a comment on the sidewalks.
Sure.
So the ordinance does ask for sidewalks, I understand why you're asking to waive it. The, the town's developed a formula by which they calculate the amount, a sum of money to be put into an escrow fund.
Perfect. That's a great idea.
So I think I'd be looking to apply that formula to this.
Absolutely. Every time you do that.
It can only be in the commercial zone, though. I'll check on that.
No, it says if you're doing a subdivision, you should provide sidewalks. But, so that formula, we've never applied it to a subdivision, but I'm just suggesting we have such a formula, we could-
Let, let me check, because I'm pretty sure that that language was added only to the commercial district for the sidewalk formula.
Oh, for the formula?
Yeah.
But I'm just saying rather than, because I, I feel like the town should get something, if we're not gonna get sidewalks in this project, then I think we should get some money into an escrow.
Well, we can only keep it for a certain amount of time if we don't build the sidewalk, though.
Well, it doesn't have to be there, the way it's written, it's that it could be-
Let me, let me check on that, see what, how that is applied, because I, I thought it was only for commercial zone, but I will check. Well, I remember the amendment, and I put it in the ordinance, but I can't remember where I put it. I'm almost 100% sure it was in the commercial zoning district.
I just did that in bridge, and I committed, I, we committed funds to the sidewalk escrow account.
Yeah.
So we didn't have to build a sidewalk along 302 that connected to nothing.
And that would only be along the front edge, if it's applicable, it'd only be along the front edge, not the entire subdivision.
Yeah, where it comes out onto Sebago Road.
I will check on that. I had that on my notes.
Perfect. And then, requirements for a Class A soil survey, obviously with the, this small ten acre site, most of it being preserved to the extent possible with forest, and the need for subsurface septics. And the DEP requires test pits for all of the buffers on this project. So this project will be, basically, have a lot of test pits being conducted on it. And therefore, the need for the Class A soil survey doesn't really necessarily provide any value, since the subsurface septic will have their own test pits. And the test pits for the forested buffers will, will meet DEP requirements. So we're just not sure what the value of that Class A survey would be. And there is one other one that we really didn't discuss, but this one came about from our stormwater design. And this goes back to the phosphorus calculations again. On the upward side, this blue, we are proposing to have the shoulder be grass, not gravel on the roadway. In order to help achieve our phosphorus requirements for the project. But this is something that just come about, based on our design, so I can expand on that further for the preliminary submission process, but, and I'll do a better job of explaining it. But that is something that I'll, we'll be looking to have the upward portion of that road, the three-foot gravel shoulder to be grassed.
Can we go back to number four, that waiver request on number four, for the soil survey? So I think, I mean, projects often have both, test pits and soil surveys. I mean, that's why the ordinance is written that way, I'm just, I'm not convinced.
I guess I was trying to say, with all the test pits that we're gonna be getting, we're gonna be meeting DEP requirements, and we're gonna be meeting main subsurface rule requirements for the stormwater infrastructure and for the subsurface septic system infrastructure for the project. The Class A soil survey just is providing no benefit to anyone, besides expenditure of-
It doesn't give you any more data?
It doesn't. Because we've-
Why do we ask for it, and it must?
Because typically you may not require all these other permits, where they're gonna be doing the test pits. So you're, you're replicating work that's already being done.
Correct. And we're using, for the, for the stormwater, we use the NRC, NRCS soils media intensity survey.
So what, what extra test pits are you doing because of this other permitting?
So there'll be two test pit on each lot-
Okay.
For the septic fields.
Okay. And that's different than what, no, because people have to do that at a time.
And then the DEP, if you're, if you're using buffers, vegetated buffers, they require test pits in those.
Okay.
And a soil classification, so is it a desoil?
Right.
We have to prove to the DEP that if we're designing around a sea soil for a forested buffer that's 50-foot wide, that we've, we have to prove to them that it actually is a sea soil. Because if it's like a desoil, then that 50-foot needs to be 70-foot.
Right.
That type of situation.
How large are these test pits, diameter?
Oh, they were down like three feet in the ground.
Depth?
You have to go down, get depth, and you gotta find the natural till, and then you, then you have to analyze-
Is it just a core sample, or is it wide?
No, it's basically a backup.
Okay.
So the site will get dug up. It's just, again, the, the Class A is on one of the most intense soil surveys there is. It's just, we don't have the need for it. I'm not gonna use it for anything. Basically, I'm gonna attach it to a submittal, and that'll be the end of it.
Can you reach in, Kathy?
I do have a question.
Does the, sorry, does the ordinance require a hydrogeologic for wells?
Excuse me, I couldn't hear you.
Does the ordinance require a hydrogeologic study for wells?
No, it does not. But that's where my next question was kinda going, is, given that the direction of the water flowing, I'm assuming that the wells are going to be towards the front of the lot, and the septics are gonna be towards the back.
Yes.
And, and where pot, is gonna be pretty much in the line, would be my guess.
Yes.
So it'll be like an exclusion zone, and a well inclusion exclusion zone.
That'll be part of our plans, though.
Yeah, okay, yeah. So that's, that's kinda where I was going, based on your question.
The exclusion zones will get, be part of the recorded subdivision plan. So that any developer comes in, they know where they have to put septics for everyone else in the subdivision.
So a lot of times, a lot of other towns, not all of your plans have shown those, but when you have smaller lots, and you have the stormwater and the slopes that you've got here, typically they'll show along the front, a strip that's an exclusion or inclusion zone for well septic. So it's very clear, when, especially when they're selling these lots off individually, that anybody that buys it knows that they have to put their well here and their septic in this zone.
The inclusion zones will get recorded on the subdivision plan. So essentially, I mean, just very simply, with water flowing this way, the wells will all be located along the front edge of the properties. And the septic fields will be down back, and be proximate to the open space and to the 50-foot buffers. So that'll just generally how it'll work. But again, that'll, we'll have that laid out, we'll submit that, and that'll get recorded in the registry. So when someone goes and buys a lot, they know where the septics can go, where the wells. Because of the idea, if you don't wanna infringe on your neighbor, because you could ruin his lot. If he doesn't have a well, that's, you know, less than 100 feet, and so you've gotta lay, map that all out.
I have another question. I know you're gonna be doing homeowners association documents. Given the size of the lots, have you given any thought to have language that each lot is for one single family dwelling unit only? And no accessory dwelling units are allowed, and I know that eventually this is gonna get challenged, but right now, that's, you can still put deed restrictions for accessory dwelling units.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure the applicant would want that.
Because you're doing your stormwater calculations based on-
Absolutely.
One single family dwelling on that, on each lot.
Yep.
I think the other thing, when, because that is part of it, you have to provide us with the documentation of how the associate- So, and this is because in my four years on the plane, where I haven't done a subdivision yet, so these are my questions.
So essentially, we would be, we submit the HOA documents for your review, and if the town lawyer wants to look at them, we submit that as part of the final application.
Okay.
I think it's probably a checkbox.
I'm just thinking as somebody, if I were to buy a lot here, and I'm the first one in, who's taking care of the road until all the other lots are sold?
That's part of the HOA documents. So typically what happens is the developers- So typically what happens is the developer is on the hook until a certain percentage of lots are sold and there's enough of an HOA. And then you can turn that over to them is how it typically works. But there's language for that. So the applicant lawyer will draft that up. And there will also be part of the DEP process, all of these buffers that we've been talking about. So the buffers on the downhill side of the road, buffers on the back of the lot, those will get deeded and recorded in the Cumberland County Registry Dees as well. So each lot will have deed restrictions on it for the buffers. But they can't cut them down and can't disturb them. And then it can be maintained if there's dead trees, then there's permission to get the dead trees out. But there's no permission to dump your lawn clippings in there and to make it a mess. It's a buffer.
And this gets demarcated, right?
Yep, and signage and it needs to stay a buffer. So we'll have signage that will say, you know, forested buffer, do not disturb. So that will get recorded for every lot, for the deed for every lot will have that.
And the other thing that I had been thinking about was our ordinance in section 107 general requirements asks that you provide an estimated cost of impact to schools and busing and all of that. Okay, so again, just because.
And that'll be part of the preliminary plan submission, that's addressing those items.
And prior to the final, you'll also be required to submit an estimate of the cost of the road and all their infrastructure, stormwater improvements, level of sweaters.
Culverts.
As culverts for escrow that the town will hold in the event that the project doesn't get finished.
Standard procedures.
Pretty standard.
Yep.
I do have a couple things. I come from a different town, I'm newer to Naples. And on private roads, we always had a note on the plan that said all roads in the subdivision are to remain private or something of that nature, so that it's clear that they're not going to be accepted by the town at any point. Particularly since you're asking for a waiver on the road construction with the crown.
Yeah, that pretty much determines that it's not going to be a public road since we're asking for a waiver from the.
The note helps, makes it very clear for individual lot buyers when they look at the plan that it's not going to be a public road and they're responsible. And then obviously you're going to consult with the attorney, but some language on there, it used to be enough that it said that for single family dwelling only, but I think it needs to be specific. Single family dwelling only, no accessory dwelling units are allowed if that's the way that the applicant is so choosing. Because technically they're not a dwelling unit, they're an accessory to the single family. And I feel like there's some wiggle room there legally. So it needs to be very clear.
So that was, I mean, that was enacted by the state, right?
It wasn't acted by the state, but it's currently private. We can't not allow on raw land or a lot that's a broad of record, we can't not allow an ADU to go in. But private landowners can still put deed restrictions on their lots currently. And so I think that's the direction, if you've got small lots, you're dealing with stormwater.
Will you include that in your?
Yes, I can do that in my memo for the next one.
Yep, so if you provide that, if there's stuff like that you want to see, it may not be covered in the ordinance. You know, feel free to include that in your memo.
Yeah.
So we can address it.
I have nothing else. You've got the underground utilities, you guys picked up on that one, that was the one that I had.
So with that, I turn it over for any remaining questions. I don't have any more.
So no, I don't have any questions either. Kathy, you're all set?
Thank you, thank you members of the board.
On the bottom of that Kathy, we still have a few things for the next steps.
Yeah, this is kind of my way of keeping track, but I'm just throwing this out here if any of the applicants know when they're coming back. Because you have to schedule a public here, before you can get preliminary plan approval, you have to have a public hearing. So if any of them know when they're coming back, we could kind of preemptively, if it looks like they're going to be able to come with a complete preliminary, preliminary plan that might get deemed complete, that you might be able to vote on that night, we'd have to have a public hearing. So I'm preemptively trying to do that in one meeting if they, if they know when they're going to be ready to come back. And if that's okay with you guys, I will treat it that way if they come in with a, looks like a complete application.
Seems to work for us. Okay. And said, said schedule a sidewalk as well for that. Does anyone feel the need for a sidewalk for this property? No, yes. Not going to see a lot under the snow right now, which is unfortunate.
Would it be helpful if you knew where the entrance?
I think that would be helpful.
If they could mark that?
Yeah.
So that you could do it on your own at least to kind of see, since you can't walk in there right now, but at least you could kind of visualize where.
Yep.
Just let Kathy know when it's in place and we could take a swing by it.
I'll mark that down for town coworker for the next project.
Thank you very much. I'll make all kinds of noise for the camera to hear this one. And we're going to move on to item C. It's a request for, excuse me, a request from H3 Development LLC represented by Terradyne Consultants again LLC for a sketch plan for a proposed 15 lot residential subdivision located at Fox Hill Estates on Harrison Road, map R09 lot 19 dash 01 through 19 dash 14 in the rural zoning district.
My name is Craig Sweet with Terradyne here on behalf of H3. So as you mentioned, I was seeking approval for 15 lot subdivisions. It was originally approved in 2006 by the same developer. They went through the whole town process and DEP stormwater permits and all the wetland permits and stuff. And then they never ended up building it, so they're looking to, to act on it now. And as part of that, every permit has lapsed, so we're redoing all the permits for them. This right here is what was filed from the last one. That was signed by the board in December of 2006. And then it was filed in the January after that. And then after that, since that, they went in and they cleared the right of way and just cut down the trees, they didn't do any construction. And then lot 15, which is this one, had an existing home at the time of the permit and that was sold off. And then they maintained ownership of lots 1 through 14, which 14 also had an existing house on it that's just being maintained by the owner in both 14 and 15 access off of Harrison Road. The address for this one is 373 Harrison Road to kind of give some general location of where it is. Flip it over to what we have today. So like, as I mentioned, as part of the process, we're going through updating all the permits. And as part of that, we had the wetlands updated by Mark Sensi who did them originally back in 2006. He confirmed that they're in, they're all the same. He found two vernal pools, which were not a part of requirements back in 2006. And they're right about here and here. We don't know at this time if they're significant or not. We found that it was outside the window to check, which is April to May timeframe. So we're, we're considering them as significant and showing the 250 foot radius. We'll go back out this spring and check to see if they are. But as of right now, we are considering them significant in terms of the plans. The roadway alignment is largely the same with the exception of this, the cul-de-sac in past. This is Fox Hill Road and this was Turtle Creek Road. This section, we shifted down about 15 feet down this way on the page to avoid some wetland impacts. So reducing the wetland impacts, which were originally approved, which was about 5,300 square feet of wetland impacts down to 4,800. So it's not a large amount, but it's, we're trying to do as much as we can to get it as low as possible. Most of the impacts are unfortunately up in the front where it's, the site's pretty constrained for the 50 foot right of way. The site is forested right now, it's about 23 acres in size. And there are a decent amount of wetlands on the site, which are largely buffered. All the wetland impacts that are proposed are for the road itself and not for the homes or the lawn areas of the lots. This kind of gray shaded area here is shown as buffer areas on the lots, which is for stormwater treatment and to preserve the wetlands as much as possible. And then the only other real addition to the plans that was not included in the 2006 one was the area in green as open space, because at that time there was no open space requirement, which this is about two and a half acres, which comes out to about 11% of the remaining prop, the total property, including the lot 15, which was sold off as open space. For that, let's see, stormwater is the same as which was a previous, previously approved, which the road is treated by swales to some dry swales, which has retention and immediate filter, which then discharges in lots or by single family home lot buffers. Lot buffers for that, the lots will be served by underground power, individual wells and septics. The property is located within the long, Long Lake watershed. So phosphorus will be updated as part of our future submissions to DEP as well. Make sure I've got everything else there. And then, so yeah, so for permits coming forward, it's, they have to reapproval with, with the town, reapproval with main DEP for the stormwater permit of the 20,000 square foot of impervious creation within an at-risk watershed, which involves the updated phosphorus. They'll have to go back for their tier one wetland alteration, which is anything over than 4,300 square feet of wetland impacts. And they're about 48. And then additionally, love to do the Army Corps self verification for under 5,000 square feet. And then re, redo the stream crossing permit. They have a 48 inch culvert. There's a stream that runs right about through here on the site. So that as moving the road down also narrowed the impacts around the, the stream itself. And then keeping the culvert the 48 inch that was previously approved as. There was a homeowners association that was developed as part and recorded as part of the last one, which will be updated for this one because there's additional open space requirements. And then for preliminary, we'll have some more information on what we're going to do for fire protection because that is an additional ordinance requirement to have the system and the sprinklers. The applicant hasn't indicated which one they want to do yet for that. So we'll have some more information in preliminary for that. And then there are four waivers on the existing approved one. And we are requesting the same waivers in this one, which is a waiver from the Class A soil survey due to the test pits on site and the test pits needed for the stormwater infrastructure. The waiver from the two street connectivity of subdivision containing 15 lots or more, that was waived back in the previous submissions. And for this one, 13 of the lots are really served by the new roads. And then two of the lots are served off of Harrison. And then the site itself is pretty constrained of getting back onto Harrison. This is a separate parcel here. And then these two lots already had existing infrastructure on it. And then around the lot, additional subdivisions have been developed since some, somewhere around when it was approved. Then to the north, I believe, there's a new one that was approved after the fact. And then there was a waiver for the 20 foot wide easement for the pedestrian utility connectivity. And then the waiver for the sidewalks as well, kind of similar to a timid on this one prior to me. But that is generally what we're looking to do for the project itself. Happy to answer any questions and talk through anything else.
So are these also going to just be sold as lots?
Yeah, I believe so. I'd have to confirm, I don't think, I think they're just building the lots and then selling the lots.
So I'll have my same comment on the sidewalk escrow account, so we're looking into that. That's what I would be inclined to ask for. I don't have anything else.
This viewed to be a private road?
Private roads, yep. They were approved as private in the, in the last one. They're going to stay private this one. And we can add that. That one has a note already, I thought it did. I could remember. Yeah, we're not, we're not trying to, the only changes are those minor ones to update to the current ordinance standards as much as we can. But other than that, we're looking to keep it exactly as it was approved in 2006.
I'm going to probably want to have a third party review on this one too, because of all the wetlands and vernal pools and stuff.
Yeah.
And Naples uses Cumberland County soils for stormwater.
Yeah, usually, I guess. I mean, my experience has been we've always used them.
That's updated, the ordinance says specifically for stormwater.
Okay.
Yeah, we look at them quite a bit on reviews, so.
That waiver one was for the same reasons as the last plan that was presented?
Yeah.
Was it the test pits that were dug for stormwater?
Yeah, and it was the same justification that was approved back in 2006. So kind of carried over, I, I wanted to have some additional language of what was approved back in, back in 2006 as well. But yeah, it's going to be lots of test pits out there and they found no issues. And we'd probably have Mark Sensi who did the wetlands, if he would do the soil survey for us as well. So he's been out in the site, he's very familiar with the site, very familiar with the area as well.
Do you anticipate being able to accommodate all the phosphorus on site or even?
Yeah, it was able to in the last round. And I'm updating all the stormwater reports for that, so I'll have it updated for that. But it was, everything was able to meet, I believe there was a small fee because it, it reduced it, but not by the threshold that, I don't remember 100%. I'll have more information in the preliminary, I don't remember off the top of my head. But they met all the, all the phosphorus standards in the main DEP stormwater treatment standards haven't changed since 2006. And they were able to meet all that in the previous. I wasn't with Terradyne at the time, so it wasn't my original design. But everything, we, I included in the packet the copy of the main DEP permit that was from 2006 that we'll be updating, I believe it's towards the end.
And I think I've read it in here, I'm confusing it with the other one now. And that's it, so the deeds will be restricted as far as cutting and vegetation if you're using that. Okay, it'll be on the deed.
Yeah, main DEP has some standard language that they like to have included for that. And it's, they get it filed right with the deeds. So for forested buffers, as Tim mentioned, you can't disturb any of them. And then meadow buffers, which we don't have in here, they can remove twice a year at max, but.
Kathy?
I have, just for my own edification, it's been a while since I've run into a vernal pool in a subdivision. If this doesn't affect, is in fact a significant after you do your investigation in April, it doesn't mean that you can't develop within the 250 foot range, it just means that it's limited disturbance.
Yes.
Can you describe what that is?
Yeah, so if it is significant, you're limited to disturb 25% of that 250 foot radius. That'd be for your house construction or lots. And then the rest would have to be kept as, they want it as contiguous as possible to keep, you know, critter kind of mobility and then any other hydraulic connectivity. But you're allowed to, it's under the permit by rule standards of the NERC, which is their, their lowest level permit, which is at the same level you go for a stream crossing. You can go for a permit by rule for up to 25% disturbance within that zone. Most of the disturbance is of this vernal pool is in the open space area, which is, which will be deed protected. And then everything that is kind of hatched here in that kind of gray shaded area is all going to be deed restricted buffer areas as well. So a large portion of it is already deed restricted. And then we've done the analysis that if, if they do come back as significant, we are under the 25% threshold for, for these two, three lots and this little bit of roadway, keeping some contiguous strips. And then sometimes they'd like to see a culvert here, which would probably put like a, you can get an eight inch culvert to go through for like salamander crossings, something like that. It really doesn't serve much for stormwater, but it serves for critter crossings in those areas. It really doesn't serve much for stormwater, but it serves for critter crossings, um, in those areas, but.
I think that's all I have, other than the same comment, these, some of these lots are a little bit larger, but, um, just being clear as to whether or not the applicant intends on having these for single-family dwelling, uh, development only.
Definitely for single-family development, and I, I don't think, they probably didn't specify it back in the Homer Association, but they have to update with the open space, so I can ask them about for the ADU.
Is there going to be a comment we're going to add to any?
Yeah, for any subdivision, I mean, some people might, they might do larger lots and they maybe, you know, want that. But particularly when we've got the vernal pools, if they come back significant, those are really small building envelopes as it is.
Yeah.
Um, so.
If they're septic designs, so for three, three or four-bedroom homes, there's not going to be much left to add on them.
Right.
ADU.
Any questions for the board?
I think Jimmy, you were on his first one.
I was the first one to sign it as the chairman back then. I saw that very distinct signature and you had it turned the other way. Didn't even need my glasses for that one.
A fifth grade squirrel.
Pretty much, yeah.
I saw it too. Oh, that's Jimmy.
I think Kathy, we'd probably be able to come back for, um, the April 8 submission deadline to get on that May 6 meeting for preliminary.
May 6 meeting would be your goal?
Yeah.
Okay, so we will advertise accordingly so that it's for a public hearing.
Yeah. And at that time, once we submit preliminary, we'll have the DEP stuff submitted as well for, kind of line us up for final at that point, but.
It would be helpful if you're ready to, uh, ready at that point. Doesn't have to be until before final application, but if you have any calculations for escrow, it's helpful but not required. Um, just because then the board will be able to discuss that and then it'll be just kind of a versary, this is the amount, so that you'll be ready for final.
We'll get everything we can for preliminary, make it, make it easier for final.
If you forgot Lot 15, the one right by the road, there, there was a house on that or is there no house on that now?
Yeah, there was a house on that when this was originally approved. And then that, I think this was filed in January, in July, that house sold. So, so everything else, H3 still owns. Um, this, there's a, there's a garage with, I think, I think there's a, you know, livable space above the garage on this one. Um, but I, no one's there now. But there is a structure on this lot, which is Lot 14 now. Um, but yeah, Lot 15 is owned by somebody else as a single-family home and technically part of this, but they're not part of it.
And they've already discontinued that drive on Lot 14? Well, that's kind of scratched out.
Um, let me see, I'll get close up. I believe so, yes, I'll, I'll confirm for that, but, um.
So interestingly enough, these lots are still on the town in Naples, so that means they've been paying taxes as individual lots all of this time, um, even though the subdivision is technically null and void.
Yeah, it shows the whole road, kind of right-of-way and everything on the tax maps as well, but.
But there is no road there right now?
There's nothing, they, after the, I think that summer, they cut the trees, like they were going to start, and then it's just regrown since then, nothing's been out there, so, as far as I know.
Do you think we can flag that entrance where that road's going to be?
Of course, yeah.
I was just going to ask that.
We can take a look up there. And if we wanted to plant a sidewalk for it, we can, when the snow goes, goes away, but.
And what, and what I can also do is, um, we can, we can take our CAD file and I can export to a Google Earth file, and then I could send it over to Kathy and she could just, so you guys could load it up on your phones and you can kind of see geospatial where you are on the lots as well for walks and stuff, and I could ask Tim to make it for his as well.
Okay.
And just to be clear, these are, the wetlands here are seasonal runoff at this point? They're not considered streams?
There is a stream, um, I, I don't know off the top of my head, I think, I believe it's intermittent. I'll have to confirm for that, but we do have a stream crossing right here, which was originally, um, as part of the original package, it's a 48-inch culvert crossing.
Okay, so it's, okay.
I believe it's intermittent, but I, I'd have to confirm for you.
Because there's different requirements of this than versus a regular stream. Okay, confirm stream is intermittent.
Okay, I don't have any more questions, anybody else on the board? Kathy, you're all set?
I'm all set, thank you.
Marty, anything else?
I'm all set now.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for that.
Excuse me, okay, we'll move on to item five, it's public participation for any planning board matters. Make it on the public. So any other business, item six?
Um, well, Mr. Chair, before you get into those dates, I had just asked Kathy Eddy and Kathy T. To share with you all, that's what that other packet of information you have at your table tonight, is a draft of the ordinance changes. Um, I just, I've realized that I don't think that we had gotten them and our next meeting is actually a public hearing for these ordinances. So I thought you might want to look at them and send any comments. Um, the select board is going to look at them on Monday, so they're going to offer any comments. So that could be a time, if you had comments about them, that you wanted to offer comments, you could do it then, because then ideally, we have a clean draft that we're working off for a public hearing, which we'll be conducting the public hearing, even though they're not all land use ordinances, which is a little odd too. Um, so that's what's happening and that's why you have that packet.
Yeah, that's it. So the next meeting, or the March 18 meeting is really important because that's the only opportunity that we have to have a public hearing in order to meet the deadlines, to get the warrant printed and all of that. So initially, we thought it was going to be the June referendum and that got changed back to the town meeting. And so for this, so that's why the, kind of the tight, um, and, and most of these ordinance are pretty low-hanging fruit, we've got some more significant ones, um, coming up for November referendum. Um, most of them are just clean, there's a couple old ordinances that need to get repealed, like the minimum lot size ordinance that kind of gave us a little bit of a hang-up for the height variance on the cell tower. Um, another older ordinance is the sign ordinance never got repealed and it's housed in the land use ordinance. So most, some of them are just cleaning up, um, things like that. Um, so the larger ticket items are going to be more towards November referendum. But, um, there was a couple of things that, um, they wanted to do. They, the language for the warrant articles has not been reviewed by the attorney yet. I just copied Naples' style, if you will. Um, but once the, after the meeting on Monday, all of it will get sent to the town attorneys to make sure that the wording for the warrant is correct and that we're not doing anything that we shouldn't do or wording it incorrectly.
Okay.
So.
Can you get comments in to you or the select board?
You can bring it in, you can give it to me and I'll forward them on to Jason and his assistant. But, um, yeah, so there's eight. So it started, I thought it was going to be a short list and it turned out to be eight pretty rapidly, um, so.
And if you had a question, you could ask me of the chair of the ordinance review case.
Yeah, so, yeah.
I imagine that you're familiar with them.
Monday is a joint, this Monday's going to be a heck of a meeting. It's, it's Budget Committee, ORC for the ordinances and the Select Board, and there's two presentations, so Monday night's going to be probably a long one. Um, because we're trying to tick off a lot of boxes in one night.
And the meeting on the 18th also is going to be for CM Brown, are they coming back that day as well or?
Uh, yes, and so that, that's going to be a long meeting. But, well, the ordinances are really pretty simple, to be honest with you. There's a couple definitions, they're not super hard, so that shouldn't take a lot of time. But CM Brown's going to be on that, and then April 1st, we've already got an application for that too. So don't plan any nights off for a little while, it looks like it's going to be pretty busy.
As I stated at the meeting at the beginning, I will not be around April 1st.
Okay.
And I will not be here for the 18th.
18th, okay, thank you.
It wouldn't be ordinance review time for cramming it to getting it done in a short period of time, would it, Jim? Um, any other business? No? Okay, motion to adjourn?
Motion made.
Motion seconded, all favor?